We're back from, the time is 6:02 and we're back from executive session. And we are going to proceed with the agenda. To start out, I am going to call the roll. District one Jasmine Bowles.
Present.
District two Mark Christmas.
Present.
District, district three Ms. Dr. Jesse Goree.
Present.
District four Victoria Williams. District five Dr. Dee Haney. District six Ms. Mary Baker.
Present.
District seven Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District eight Ms. Joy Telus Cooper. District, district nine that's myself. Superintendent Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Senior Deputy Superintendent Chief of Staff Dr. Douglas Hendricks. Attorney Clem Doyle. Board Liaison Kimberly Blackwood. Assistant to the Superintendent Ms. Alicia Battle. And Assistant to the Chief of Staff Ms. Dawn Biles. Fantastic, thank you. We are now going to move into board recognitions. So I will hand it over to Mr. Charles White. And we will hear all the great people being recognized this evening.
Good evening everyone. And welcome to our May 5th board meeting. It is my, in some respects honor to recognize some individuals tonight that are going to offer some words of wisdom and thought. Both have served in the role of intern to the board. And I'm sure they've learned a great deal because this is an outstanding and distinguished board of education. It is my pleasure to introduce Rain Walker and Dorlan Ijali.
Good evening Board Chair Superintendent Members of the School Board and everyone in attendance. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Rain Walker. And I have had the incredible honor of serving as the School Board intern for the past two years. Standing beside me here is Dorlan another board intern. While our fellow board intern train couldn't be here tonight. I want to take a moment to recognize her as well. As both a high school student and someone who's been able to witness the work behind the scenes. I'd like to take a moment to share what CCPS has done for me. Both personally and professionally. As a student CCPS has provided me with a, with a strong academic foundation. But more than that, it has offered me opportunity. From the classroom to extracurriculars, I've been surrounded by educators who genuinely care. Not just about test scores, but about who we are as individuals. They've challenged me, encouraged me, and helped me grow in ways that extend far beyond the curriculum. As the School Board intern, I have had the rare opportunity to learn how decisions are made at the district level. I've been able to observe the work through thought, the thoughtfulness and the care that goes into leading a school system of this size. While I don't speak for all students, being in this space has helped me better understand how students' needs are considered and how every decision is made with purpose. To the board, to our superintendent and to every teacher and staff member who makes this district what it is. Thank you. Thank you for your investment, your leadership and your heart. Because of CCPS, I've grown not only as a student, but as a person. As a proud member of the class of 2025, I'm honored to soon call myself a CCPS alum. I will carry everything I've learned here into the next chapter of my life. And I'll always be grateful to have been a part of a school system that believes in its students. Thank you.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dorlan Ijali. It is my honor to serve as the board intern for the past year for the best board in the metro Atlanta area. And it is my greater honor to stand before each and every one of you here to give this speech, this commencement speech, as you are the ones who make CCPS what it is. The parents in the crowd, the students, as well as the staff. Would you all be able to give a round of applause each and everyone who is in the crowd today for being out here? As both a high school student and one seven on the school board. I have been able to witness behind the scenes of everything the district does to impact the students. Whether it is going to various events, taking time out of their weekends to visit an event at a center school. Or it is going, having a board meeting in front of each and every one of you. It has been my honor to work along with them and serve them as their intern for the past year. As a student, CCPS has given me more than a strong academic foundation. It has given me opportunity and a place to grow. Whether in the classroom, student government, or other leadership roles. I have been surrounded by educators and mentors who genuinely care. Not just about my grades, but about my well-being as a whole. They have challenged me, encouraged me, and supported me as I stepped into leadership roles. That at times felt rare for someone like me to pursue. And to the school, and as the school board intern, I have been privileged to see how decisions are made at a district level. I've witnessed firsthand the dedication, the thoughtfulness, and the genuine care that goes into running a school system of this size. While I can't speak for every student, my time in this role has deepened my understanding of how student voices and needs are considered and how every decision is made with intention. To the board, our superintendent and every teacher and staff member who helps shape this district. Thank you. Thank you for investing in the students. Thank you for investing in students like me for your leadership and for believing in the potential of every student you serve. Because of CCPS, I have grown not just as a student, but as a leader and a person. As a proud member of the class of 2025, I am excited to soon call myself a CCPS alum. I will carry the lessons and experiences I have gained here into the next chapter of my life. And I will always be grateful to have been part of a school system that encourages students to lead, to serve, and to believe in themselves. In my closing remarks, I want to give thanks to everyone who has helped me as a student through here. The CCPS Nutrition Department for bringing food each and every day, making sure we are fed at school. To the athletes as well as the staff members who are coaching me through my sports, the various sports I play. To the sponsors and teachers who have been in charge of the clubs I've joined. To my teachers who grade my work each and every day and mentor me, not just in the classroom, but also in life. I thank you all and I thank the board for their time today.
You two have made us extremely proud. I wish you could have seen the faces of the board members when you guys were talking. They act like they were your own parents. Thank you. The pledge of allegiance or are you guys going to do the pledge of allegiance?
May you all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. White, with the board recognitions. I would, I would like to ask the board if we could amend the current agenda. We have an additional item that I want to place under the business agenda for action. We, we, I need a, it's, it's the bond resolution that you guys were emailed today. Did, did everybody get to peek at that resolution? Right? No? Huh? Right. Okay. So let me poll the board real quick. Cooper, are you comfortable with adding this to the agenda or not? No? Okay. Ms. Ms. Hill? Mary? Victoria? Yes. Ms. Bowles? Yes? Yeah. We have the five? So this, this resolution is a resolution. First of all. We cannot add things into the agenda at the last minute. Right? Ms. Bivens, are you here? Is Ms. Bivens here? Yeah. If you could come to the mic, I just, what I'm trying to do is figure out the, the, um, the time constraint on this. I want to get the time constraint on it. I got you. I want to, all right, Ms. Ms. Bivens?
Good, good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Dr. Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community. So the, the request was to add in the resolution for the bond. I think we, I mentioned it last Monday during the work session that we had put out, sent out the bids that they had just come in and that we will potentially be bringing this to the board today to approve, to move forward with issuing the bond. That's what this is for. Excuse me.
The, the issue with time, can you talk about that?
Sure. So in the executive summary, and Mr. Walker spoke to it also, financial advisors here. We, in April, we sent out requests for bids to several institutions. We received those last week. The lowest investor submitted by Truist Bank with an interest rate of 5.13%. That rate is guaranteed if we close on or before May 31st. It will increase to 5.16% if it closes after that.
Are we at risk with the interest rate if we hold on?
Are we at risk with the interest rate if we wait till pass today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. So the, the interest rate could, could go up or down.
Yes. You know, we submitted the bids in late March. And we didn't know that President Trump was going to raise the tariffs. So the marketplace just fell like a stone. And so we expected about eight bids. We wound up getting four. And Truist was the best and it was at 5.13%. But I have to close it by May the 31st or it goes up to 5.16. And because the marketplace is just so topsy-turvy, I wanted to strike fast and hit that bid before they decided to change their mind.
So you have until May 31st?
I do, sir.
Right, okay. All right. Well, yes, ma'am? To add it to the agenda? It's 5-4. All right. We'll add it to the agenda and we'll have a discussion as that, as that comes up. And when we do have that discussion, Mr. Wall will come up and although it's just been presented. I would love for you to present a little bit of it again to emphasize, you know, exactly what's happening. If the voters voted on March 18th, correct? To pass this bond resolution and they just need the board to approve that vote that already happened on May 18th, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll, we'll see you at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to add this item to the agenda? Okay. No, I was just polling them. I want to officially make a motion. Right. So if I get a motion? All right. I got a, I got a motion from Mr. Mark Christmas. Do I got a second? Ms. Baker seconded. It was properly moved and seconded. Can I get a vote? The item is added to the, um, to the agenda. All of those opposed? One, two, three, four. Ms. Battles, do you have that? Oppose, raise your hand. Hi? Got it? And lastly, another change to the agenda, the item that's under the consent agenda, RFP 01425 Convention Convocation Center Management, we're going to remove that from the agenda. And we'll have a special call meeting to discuss that specific item. I think we've all agreed that May 20th at 5 o'clock would be a suitable time to do this. Am I correct? All right. Good deal.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Ed Wall is going to kind of reiterate the points of what he talked about on March 18th.
That's, he's basically going to give us an overview of what this whole process is all about.
I just need to hear the overview in order to know, because I just didn't want, when I said no, I just didn't want us to be in the blind of anything changed from what he just stated. So once we get the overview and the public can hear if there have been any changes to keep the transparency. Then we'll go ahead and we'll move forward as you discussed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. This is in the business agenda, business agenda for action items.
Under C. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. White, I'm handing this platform back over to you for the board recognition.
I invite the board to go to the, down in front of the board table. And while they're doing so, I would ask all of those students who are here to receive technology awards to please go and line up along the wall on the far side. That's all students. Those that are receiving them from the district attorney and those that are receiving them from communities in school. And while they're doing that, I'm going to invite Dr. Douglas Hendricks, Dr. Delphia Young, Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. Tim Guiney, and Dr. Eldrick Horton to please join the board up front. It is also, it is also my distinct pleasure to invite District Attorney Tasha Mosley to join us up front as well. And also, may I also ask Dr. Crawford to please come forward, Apple Crawford to come, please come forward. Okay. The technology awards are presented to CCPS seniors selected by each school's leadership. Students will receive credentials that will allow them to pick up a computer and printer in the lobby as they depart. As I call your name, please come forward and remain on stage until all students are called. The computers are provided for this group of schools by District Attorney Tasha Mosley, who has done this for a number of years. And we do appreciate her generosity in this matter. So let's give her a big hand. The schools are, the students are Curtis Ball, Marlene Hernandez, Sophia Nguyen, Tamaya Miller, Selena Clark, Oswaldo Reyes Lozano, Destiny Ponder, Derek Hamter, Jesus Escabal, Tamora Brown, Malachi Gibson, Kamia Sylvester, Lacey Collins, Ronnie Terry III, Jamaya Hilpot, Amir Scott Williamson, Ashat Shera, Tanya Mitchell, Trinity Anderson, Kamia Crawford, Jayla Estrada, Milan Turn of Seed, Fenaya JD, Khalil Ramir. I would now like to invite Frank Brown, the CEO of Community and Schools Atlanta, and Tiffany Johnson, Director of Programs for Community and Schools. This year, they have stepped up and have graciously supported awards for two seniors. They will be graduating from Utopian Academy of the Arts. It is the first graduating class for that school. The recipients are JD Jenkins and Jackson Edwards. If they're not, if they're not included. This is the list.
So she just missed her name?
She missed her name. It was called. Before, before we take the photograph, Khalil Ramir, if she would please come up on stage as well to be part of our team. Now, before they go away, just want to let you know what's going to happen. The students have the opportunity to get their computers and their printers in the main lobby. They just have to go, when they leave the room, that's the reason why they didn't get them in here is because it's an awful lot to carry. And so they can go into the main lobby and they can check by the concession stand. And you don't even have to tip the server if you don't want to. So, but we thank you and congratulations and best of luck for the future. Our next group that we're going to recognize, and I'm going to ask all of our leaders if they would to remain up front, is our CTI winners. If they would please, if they are here, if they would line up along the far wall as I read a brief description of why we're recognizing them. And just be ready to come up when I get ready, when I get to that point. Clayton County Public Schools CTI coordinators and students have participated in these Career Technical Instruction State Leadership Conference. It was held recently. They host a spring conference with a number of competitive events representing various career pathways with this year, for this year. The conference aims to educate students with disabilities about resources and career options. I'm going to ask the students if they would begin coming on stage to greet the board. These events serve as a platform for students to apply employability skills within their chosen pathways. This year, students from Clayton County Public Schools placed in a number of top three in categories and activities such as cosmetology, hair design. They've also scored very well in a number of other categories including CTA showcase, floor culture, and video production. It also should be pointed out that Lovejoy High School received a plaque for Outstanding School of the Year. So congratulations to them. We want to give special attention to the coordinators at the schools. Marion Williams, Glenn Alexander, William Dean, Simone Mullen, and Dr. Clara Clark for their hard work in bringing this fine group of students together and have them competition ready. Congratulations. Congratulations. Oh, don't leave. We're gonna get a picture. We're gonna do the picture. Our next group will be our Hear Our Voices winners. This year, we're going to be doing it a little different. We will not be calling names again this year because of the large number of recipients. However, each of the individuals are receiving a certificate from the board, and we'll also have their name and their work published in a document. Joining us up front, I would ask for Mr. Lonnie Farmer, Dr. Shanif Ratcliffe, Dr. Cassandra Hopkins, Ms. Ebony Brown, and her HOV organizing team. If they are in and are able to join us up on the stage, we would greatly appreciate that. The lineup that we're going to follow is as follows. We will take this, we will honor the oratory students, students who have won and participated in oratory. So if that is you, please line up along the wall. Following the oratory students, we will honor the narrative students, and following them, the dictated narrative students. So please, would those three groups line up along the far wall? And I do need to, I forgot, Dr. Charmin Johnson, who is our elementary person alongside Dr. Guiney. Come on down. So if you're in position, would the oratory students please come on stage to meet the board? This group is all grade levels. So the students in the oratory category, please stay for a photograph with the board. You can exit this way, or whichever way you're going. That's good. We're going to bring the narrative and the dictated narrative groups to the stage, all grade levels as our next group. We're going to ask students who won awards in poetry, if they would line up along the far wall. They will follow the narrative groups onto stage. So if you're in position, please come on to the stage and join the board. This is both groups dictated narrative and narrative, all grade levels. Okay? And once the poetry group is in place, if the essay group, all grade levels, would get in line behind them along the wall on the left. Thank you. We're going to do a little something different because of the size of the poetry and the essay groups. Poetry students in grades kindergarten through grade three, please come to the stage and greet the board. I've been advised that we should be able to get all the poetry students on stage. Let's go ahead and do that, please. All poetry students on stage. An interesting note about the poetry group is from kindergarten through grade eight. Again, our largest group of winners in the Hear Our Voices competition was in the category of essays. So we'll start out by announcing for kindergarten through grade three, if they would please come forward and join the board on stage. Can we get them all? I've been advised we can do them all. So all grades for essays, all grades for essays. Please come on stage and join everyone on stage. Our next recognitions will be for our perfect pitch winners. I will ask our group of individuals to remain up front, and we also would invite principals from Mondays Mill High School, Forest Park High School, and Stillwell School of the Arts to please join us up front, along with Mr. Mitch Johnson. And would all the students who are here to be recognized for the perfect pitch, please line up along the far wall? The Eighth Annual Elevator Pitch Competition, supported by the Clayton County Public Schools Foundation and Prime America, is notable for helping students vie for a career position. High school-level competitors must briefly explain how they can benefit a potential employer or college by persuasively explaining their unique traits, experiences, skills, and accomplishments. The benefits of this competition include developing confidence when public speaking, applying persuasive communication techniques, promoting strength and talents, and cultivating team collaboration. The teams vie for something more than just a special pat on the back. They get cold, hard cash. The third-place team is from Stillwell School of the Arts. The coach is Ms. Pamela White, and the members are Taylor Moore, Natalie Ramirez-Lares, Aiden Raglu, Damon Fuller, and Jalen Walton. The individuals, the team members, will receive $75, and the coach will receive $75 as well. The second-place team, Mondays Mill High School. The coach is Ms. Ebony Armstrong. The team members, Tiana Stanley, Ellie Amato, Zemir Peoples, Katia Achoti, and Zion Owens. The coach receives a $75 prize. Members of the team will receive $150 each. First place, Forest Park High School. The coach is Dr. Ernest Jolly. Team members are Athena Lee, Daniel Lopez Major, Soraya Jorge, Diego Abreu, Katie Melkior Albereta. The coach receives a cash gift of $150, and the team members receive $300 each. Now, before we snap the picture, there is, there are two other awards, because you don't just vie for team awards, you also vie for individual awards. And the judges determine the following individuals to be the top prize winners. The top prize winner for coach, Ms. Ebony Armstrong of Mondays Mill High School. She receives $150. The winner of first place among students, Zemir Peoples of Mondays Mill High School, who will receive an additional $300. Our next three, our next awards are for individuals, and I have to apologize to each of them, because while I had my hands on your certificates from the board, I apparently forgot to bring them with me. So you will definitely get a certificate from the board, but we wanted to go ahead and honor you. The first individual is Peter Spence. Is Ms. Frida Brown in the audience? Because we'd like to get her up here as well. Because Peter is being honored for designing the DSA button. The DSA button is something, it is a project that is done every year, an art project, to design the button that you see being worn by Peter and by members of the staff. And they do such a really great job. And Peter is, he designed this badge or pin using the theme Building Futures, which is the theme for 2025. He is a ninth grader, and he attends Lovejoy High School. If Kareem Sanders is in the audience, please join us on stage. We'd love to have you up here in support of Peter. Our next recipient, we would like to ask Ms. Brenda Ross Wilson and Mr. Jeremy, if he is here. Mr. Jeremy, would may you please join us up front? We want to congratulate a young lady, and if she is here, to please come We want to congratulate a young lady, and if she is here, to please come on down, Nita Day. She is a sophomore at Stillwell School of the Arts, and we honor her tonight on being named and newly awarded National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Gold Medalist. She won the award in the photography category for her entry, The Silent Watcher. Nearly 100,000 teens entered more than 310,000 original works of art and writing to the 2025 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Competition. Her work was selected for excellence in originality, skill, and the emergence of a personal voice or vision. She will be heading to Carnegie Hall in New York on June the 11th to display her work and attend the awards ceremony. Congratulations. London is not here? All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna congratulate him anyway. Okay, our, our last student that to be honored was as a student at Stillwell School of the Arts. And so we want to congratulate London Grant, an 11th grader who won first place in the 2025 Magnet Schools of America Student Poster Contest for the high school level. The winning student posters will be recognized, or have been recognized in Nashville along with an announcement about their winning. He will, is receiving an award plaque and a prize and will be part of that ceremony. We just want to say congratulations to London and we wish him the best moving forward. We've got a couple more things to do. And on this one, I'm going to ask any member of the district's cabinet who is not on the stage to please come on stage and join the folks up here. And if she is here, and I'm sure she is, Dr. Gloria Duncan, we'd like to have you up on stage as well. There's a reason for doing this. And that's because we want to welcome some new teachers into our midst. And I'm going to ask all members of the, I'm going to ask everyone who is in the audience, who is part of Georgia TAP, to please stand. And if you could bring up the house lights so you people can see these outstanding individuals. Georgia TAP is an acronym for Teacher Academy for Preparation and Pedagogy, an alternative option for individuals who hold bachelor's degrees or higher but do not have a teaching certificate. The program equips teachers, candidates, with the appropriate knowledge and skills needed to ensure a reasonable expectation of initial success in their classrooms. Participants complete a rigorous course of study while instructing students. Tonight, we honor this class, which will bring 77 new teachers into our district. And Ronald, I don't know what you want to get a picture of, but this is a pretty good one up here too. Okay, all the TAP people, turn around. Young, go sit down. Hmm, what? Wait a minute. They gotta do it one more time. Okay, I know, we'll do that first, okay. We just have these right here, and we're just gonna call them pretty quickly up there. Our final recognition for the evening involves some special people that are being honored for a couple of really important events. During National Women's History Month, the district, led by board member Dr. Jessie Goree, held its annual girls' conference. And it was a very important event. And so we're going to call some people to come up and receive plaques and awards. If you are here, please come forward. I'm going to go through the list because there were a lot of people who helped make that happen, and we want to make sure that they're all honored. So if you'll come forward as I call your name and remain up front until the names are called. Net Planner Systems, Medja Education, Lavender and Associates, Georgia Power, Pamela Wiltz, Ruth Sisk, Para Carr, Audrey Hamilton, Clem Doyle, and the GDCR Attorneys, Vanessa Ware, Demaris Garrett, Dr. Ebony Lee, and the Communications Team, Denmark Asby Attorneys, the CCPS Foundation Incorporated, Mr. Lonnie Smith, Dr. Alicia Dunn, and the Department of Guidance and Counseling, Dr. Chateau Hendricks, and the Atlanta Falcons Cheerleaders, Ms. Ebony Brown, and the District's ELA Department, CCPS Nutrition Department, the Transportation Department of the District, and the Facility Services Department, Dr. Angela Horson Collier, and the Department of Student Services, Brooke Gladney, and the Atlanta Hawks, Ms. Felicia Brown, Dr. April Crawford, Nam St., Barbara Crum, and Perkins and Will, Dr. Gabriel Starr, and Deasia O'Hara, if you could please come forward. You need it.
One more.
Thank you. Our final recognition, also supported by members of, by Dr. Goree, salutes individuals who are, have gone above and beyond. Yes, sir. Oh, my goodness. Not only did I leave three certificates at home, I left an entire page of my script. So we're honoring tonight, I apologize, Dr. Buddy, and the M.D. Roberts Junior Beta Club. Please come on stage. This group of outstanding students represented their school and their school district in excellent fashion, winning numerous awards in competitive events at their state conference. I think I owe this group a pizza party. And Dr. Buddy, I will be getting in touch with you about that. Okay. So our final recognition, finally, for outstanding service above and beyond the call of duty and/or the call of expectation. Would you please come forward and be recognized by the board? Dr. Shanice Ratcliffe, Dr. Beatrice Haney, Diane Holmes, Mr. Lovingold Harold, Broderick Dunlap, Dr. Ralph Simpson, Mr. Gary Townsend, Mr. Ed Blackwood, John Crane, Tim Cruz, Dr. Prince Bowie, Ms. Tamara Rainwater, Mr. Sam Coger. Also, we're recognizing Gashrell or GGM, Charlie Owens, Pro Che, Lorenzo Boyce, Debbie Habe, Lashandra Goggins, Brittany Lee, Veronica Lee, Carlos Rodriguez, Alexis Williams, the Tony Jones, and Mr. Jerry Calm.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna read the ethics statement. In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid or involve conflict of interest and the appearance of such conflict. Does any board member have does any board member have any known conflict of you gotta do the jewelry? And let me finish reading this while you're doing that. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respects to any matters scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or the appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. Okay, Ms. Black?
So Ms. Rice could not be here tonight to draw for, you've been noticed. So I'm gonna do that on her behalf. So let's see. And you know, somebody, they sometimes pay your mortgage or whatever, you have to spend the wheel of fortune on this. Okay.
Ms. Holman? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Joaquinia Holman, and I am here in support of Tapestry Public Charter School. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, and Members of the Community. My name is Joaquinia Holman, and I am a proud Clayton County resident of over 20 years. I graduated from Clayton County Public Schools and also chose to raise my family here because I believe in the potential and promise of this community. First, I want to recognize the incredible academic progress Clayton County has made recently. The data shows improvement in leadership, moving our schools and students in the right direction. That makes me proud to live in a county committed to educational excellence and well-being. Your vision states that you are dedicated to ensuring every student has the resources and support to succeed, not just in the classroom, but in life. I truly believe Tapestry Public Charter School will be a powerful addition to our county, working alongside the great progress already being made while creating more access for students with diverse learning needs. This is personal for me. I am a mother of children who are neurodivergent and on the autism spectrum. They're brilliant, creative, and full of so much potential, but they need a school environment that understands and supports them. Right now, we travel miles outside of Clayton County just to find the schools and resources they need because they aren't available here. That's heartbreaking as a parent who wants to see her children thrive in the very community where we live, pay taxes, and support. We want to support and uplift this community to ensure it thrives for all who reside here. Our children's destinies matter. They deserve the same quality schools and resources available to children in other counties and communities. Middle and high school are some of the most important years in a child's development. Tapestry offers a safe, inclusive, trauma-informed environment where neurodiverse students can grow, learn, and succeed. Tapestry already reflects our county's diversity and is now a Title I school supporting families who need it most. Their commitment to education is nationally recognized and rooted in love, care, and community. Who wouldn't want that in their neighborhood? I believe in Clayton County, our students, your vision, and I believe in you, our leaders. It truly takes a supportive village to contribute to the success of children. Please help us build a village of support for neurodiverse learners and make history by approving Tapestry, not just for my family, but every family needing and praying and hoping for this kind of opportunity in their community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Holman. Next up, I have Ms. Amy Sims. Amy Sims.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I will be speaking on the topic of Tapestry. My name is Amy, and I'm here in Clayton County as a proud parent advocate. I'm also a single mother to one incredible little boy, Emir. My super amazing, deeply artistic, rising feels greater. As his mother, nothing in this world matters more to me than his happiness, his growth, and his ability to strive. And yet, my heart trembles every time I think about what comes next for him. Middle school and our current options, there is no guarantee, no safety net for a child like mine. Emir has special needs that require care, patience, and understanding. The traditional public middle schools near us are not equipped to provide that. The class sizes are overwhelming, the staff is overstretched, and the support plans, the EIPs and the 504s, gets lost in a shuffle. Emir attends a charter school now, and while the smaller settings help with his anxiety, we are still struggling. His teachers, although well-meaning, also lack the training and support that they are needing to truly see my son, to teach him as Emir, not just a number in the classroom. But then, someone introduced me to Tapestry Public Charter School, and for the first time in a long time, I found hope. At this point, I feel like that Tapestry would be a great school for Clayton County. Tapestry is different. It's a place built around the belief that every child matters, that inclusion is not just a word, it's a practice. At Tapestry, every core classroom has both a general education teacher and a special education teacher, working together to ensure no child falls through the cracks. Their students-to-teacher ratio allows for a connection. Their sensory rooms allow for kids like Emir to reset, regroup, and return ready to learn. Their clubs and activities create spaces for belonging, something Emir has yet to truly find. This is not just about my child, it's about our children, the ones who are gifted, the ones who are neurodivergent, the ones who are overlooked. We deserve options in Clayton County. Families like mine deserve a choice that doesn't require $30,000 tuition. Tapestry can be their choice. Voting yes for Tapestry means voting yes to inclusion, to equity, and hope. Let's become the first county in seven years to approve a new local charter school in Georgia, and let's make it one that lifts up every child. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your yes.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Next, Mr. Bradford Hadnot. Mr. Bradford Hadnot.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Smith, colleagues, and distinguished guests. My name is Bradford Hadnot, and I teach at Eddie White Middle School at this time. I have two topics I want to bring up, but first, I want to comment on Dr. Smith's vision of a student. I would like to add that I may be the vision of a educator in Clayton County. I'm Clayton County born and bred. In fact, Dr. Smith, I've told you before, you were my eighth grade teacher. So I am a TAP graduate, so it seems appropriate that I'm speaking tonight. So the first topic I want to bring up is that of what Dr. Goree mentioned about administrators. So in this county, we have a program that is for assistant principals called Learn to Lead. We also have a program for expiring principals. I am in that program. The problem I have is those members of my class and those that came before me are having to leave the county to get the jobs. We're not even getting interviews. But if you want a high-quality APs, principals, why not hire from within? That's my question. The second topic I have is about the budget. If we are going to take a serious look, and Ms. Baker commented about the tax revenues from other counties. We're educators, so let's look at the data. The data states, I looked at the top 30 counties by student numbers in this county. We have the highest amount of open jobs as of 3:00 p.m. today with 590 jobs posted. That's the 30 largest counties. We have the most. That's a problem to me, being from Clayton County, being loyal to Clayton County. I took it a step farther. Let's look at pay rates. We are ranked 20th out of those 30 for first-year teacher pay. All of my stats can be verified. I'd be glad to provide you the data if required. So my problem is, if you're going to leave our pay as it is, we're at the bottom. People are going to leave. Come June 1st, that 590 is going to go up because pay's not everything, but it's important. If we can't live in the district we love and we live, I'm sorry. Money does matter. It does. So I encourage you and I promote you to take a step back before you vote and look at it. Look at what I, the data I presented you tonight. We're not in the top 10. I understand, we might not be number one. We surely can be in the top 10. So I encourage you, take another look. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hadnot. My last speaker for this evening is Ms. Angelica Mendez.
I'm Angelica Mendez, and I'll be speaking about school literature. 1,039 inappropriate books sitting on our school's library shelves at arms' reach for our children to read for themselves. These books are sexually explicit and outside of the school library are unlawful and illicit. They are full of vulgarities and graphic matter, which, once consumed, a child's innocence does shatter for they contain sexual acts in detailed description, some even have drawings with vivid depiction. Others offer QR codes or links to websites, opening up a rabbit hole, which often leads to porn addiction, youth addicted to an endless scroll. These books are not entertaining or educating, but indoctrination and persuasive narrative for castrating. A school library isn't the place for our youth to read about two moms or two dads, but about math, science, nature, animals, or even frog pads. It should be the place where science and truth are vital, not lies that one may choose which pronoun is their title. Our children may learn to love all despite diversity without the need to give them access to perversity. Contrary to popular belief and as being reported, we're not banning books but demanding they be exported out of our children's public school libraries. Today, we plead before you, wonderful functionaries. Ms. Sabrina Hill of District 7 said, quote, "Every child needs a champion," end quote. I ask today that we be the champions our children deserve by removing these 1,039 sexually explicit and red-flag books from all Clayton County school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mendez. And that completes the public participation for this evening. Well, now move into recommendations from the executive session. I will pass the mic over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairwoman, Board Members, colleagues, members of the community. I would like for the Board to consider for the position of Director of Instructional Technology, Sharita Slay.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that as the Director of Instructional Technology.
Thank you. Now, I'm Dr. Haney.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It looks unanimous.
Thank you, Board Members. Have no further recommendations. Is Mr. Slay in the audience? Please stand and be recognized, and congratulations. Thank you, Board Members.
Got it. We also have the employee tribunal hearing, 2024-2025-5. Do I have a motion for the superintendent's recommendation? Ms. Baker?
I move that we accept the hearing board's recommendation for 2024-2025-05.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. The vote has been motioned and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous. That are, that's all the recommendations from executive session. We now have announcements, but prior to announcements, I think Dr. Smith wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we're in the middle of testing. We're down the final stretch, and I just wanted the Board to be informed and the community in terms of how we're faring with that process. And I just wanted Dr. Delphia Young to speak briefly about how we're doing and the timeline and what we can expect and whatever information she deems necessary to share.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Ms. Vice Chair, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Smith, audience. It is my pleasure, as always, to say, phew, we in the season of testing. We are in the process of wrapping up our Georgia Milestone Assessment. I am proud to say we have closed out our end-of-course assessment. Those are the assessments for our high school. We had 21,000 sessions and over 8,000 students tested for the Georgia Milestone End-of-Course Assessment. We are finishing up our end-of-grade assessment for our elementary and middle school students. Right after that, we'll be engaging in our Advanced Placement and Cambridge Assessments. We hope to, we will conclude our Georgia Milestone Assessment May the 16th, and we are about to start again, as I said, the AP exam. We will begin to see preliminary results that we can share with numbers of proficiency rates around graduation with a strong outcome being available for the 1st of June and then the data we embargo for the public. But our member of the School Board will have the numbers right at graduation up until the final date before embargo. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Young. And prior to the announcement starting, I just want to let the public know that the Board will be putting on a budget conversation this Wednesday night at 7:00 p.m. We're going to get the information out to everybody, staff and community tomorrow morning so that you can have the virtual link to join the Board Conversation about the budget at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday. It's going to be in the form of a webinar. It'll be virtual. All right, so look out, look, watch your emails, Mr. Hadnot. It'll be a deeper discussion on the, on the budget directly from the School Board. Now I'm ready for announcements. Now I'm ready for announcements.
Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Smith, District Administrators and Citizens of Clayton County. My name is Jana Cargillich, and I am an eighth grader at Eddie White Middle Academy.
And my name is Dejade Pinnock. I'm also a scholar at Eddie White Middle Academy in the eighth grade.
It is our pleasure to present the board announcements for the month of May.
May serves as Family Wellness Month and National Heal the Children Month. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. The theme for this year is Turn Awareness Into Action.
National Teacher Appreciation Week begins Monday, May fifth, and will continue through Friday, May ninth. National Teacher Day is Tuesday, May sixth. We encourage everyone to express their appreciation for the outstanding work that our teachers perform every day in classrooms throughout Clayton County Public Schools. Graduation ceremonies for members of Clayton County Public Schools, Class of two thousand twenty-five, will be held at the District Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro and the GICC in College Park. Commencement exercises for the District's high schools will take place Monday through Friday, May nineteenth through twenty-third. A full schedule for graduation exercises is available on the District's website. As part of the final days of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year, the District will observe Extending Learning Beyond the Classroom Days on Thursday, May twenty-second and Friday, May twenty-third. All students will remain at home or for asynchronous or the independent learning, while all staff will report to their respective locations.
The last day of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, one hundred eighty-day school year for students is Friday, May twenty-third.
The District's schools and offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day on Monday, May twenty-sixth.
The last day of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year for teachers and other one hundred ninety-day staff is Thursday, May twenty-ninth.
And finally, unless otherwise posted, the June Board Meeting will be held at the Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro on Monday, June second, at six PM. Mr. Chairman, that concludes tonight's announcements.
We've now reached to the Consent Agenda for Action. Um, we're removing Item G, which is the RFP zero one four twenty-five Convocation Center Management, um, contract. So we're removing that, and we will discuss that specific item at our called board meeting. So on this consent agenda, we're going to, we're going to be, um, voting on the financial report, the SPOS revenue report, the purchasing report, the budget amendments, the SPOS construction report, capital to purchasing report, and the personnel changes report. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? You have a question? Okay. Good question. The resolution will be under the Business Agenda for Action. It's Item C. We, we are gonna vote on that separately. All right, so do I have a motion for financial reports, SPOS revenue report, purchasing report, budget amendments, SPOS construction report, capital to purchasing report, and lastly, the personnel change report? Do I have a motion? Ms. Baker?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as stated.
Mr. Christmas. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. Can I get a vote on the consent agenda? It's unanimous. Okay, now, we're, but Ms. Ms., uh, Doc, Ms. Blackwood? You said we have another video? Which, this video is on in regards to?
In literacy.
All right, let's queue that up and get through that. Once those
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Board
Oh, this is huge. We're probably able to give out over twenty scholarships per high school in Clayton County because of the generosity of all of our partners. This is incredible. Year after year after year, they keep pouring into our students, they keep believing in us, they keep supporting our families, and I couldn't be no more grateful than I am for what they do that would be a direct benefit for so many, so many graduating seniors.
And community members. Did you know that students across the nation, including in Clayton County Public Schools, struggle with reading at third grade level? That means a lot of kids are having a hard time, and it can cause problems way beyond school. When kids can't read well, it's
All right, so we're up to the Business Agenda for Action. The first item on the Business Agenda is the K-12 Social Studies and the nine, nine to twelve Language Arts Textbook Adoption. We had that presentation last, um, last week. Can I get a motion for the, um, K-12 Social Studies? Ms. Baker?
I move that we accept the, uh, represent, uh, I'm sorry, the superintendent's recommendation for the K-12 Social, uh, Studies and Language Arts Adoption as presented.
Good deal. Ms. Goree? Good deal. The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote from the board members, please? It's unanimous. Next, we have the Policy Series J. This, it, it's been through its proper reads, and I need a motion for Policy J. It has been moved. I need a second. Ms. Cooper? Good deal. It's been, it's been moved and properly seconded. Can I get a vote for Policy Series J? It is unanimous. The last item on the list is the Bond Resolution, but because it was added so late, if Ms. Bivens and Mr. Ed Walls can come up to the podium for a couple of questions before we go on with that motion and that vote. Mr. Wall, can you take me through the process? Can you give me the, the, um, timeline that these bonds were, um, were made and considered? So, start from the beginning, when the concept came up. Tell me what happened on, on, um, March eighteenth, and tell me why we're here today.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So you all know, we had several retreats in twenty-four to talk about this SPOS renewal and talk about the bond issue itself. And, uh, I believe it was late December or early January, y'all approved a resolution asking the voters to approve a renewal of your SPOS and to approve this four hundred and ninety-five million dollar bond issue that would be paid by this SPOS that we're levying now and a new one that the voters would approve. If y'all recall, our current SPOS that we're under, that got approved in two thousand twenty-three, it started October one of twenty-four, and will go for five years. So that'll be September thirtieth of twenty-nine, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The voters on March the eighteenth approved this four hundred and ninety-five million dollar bond issue that's before you tonight, and they also approved a continuation SPOS that will start October one of twenty-nine and go to September thirtieth of thirty-four. Our current SPOS and that one pays a debt service on this four hundred and ninety-five million dollar bond issue you have before you tonight and the two hundred and eighty million that we sold last year. So when the voters approved this on March the eighteenth, um, we, uh, Western Denmark had a, um, a resolution before he declared the election results. It went before the Clayton County Board of Elections. Ramona and Dr. Smith and the staff, and I apologize to you, Ms. Bivens, uh, she authorized me to do a term sheet to put it all out for bid. And we put it out for bid. We had bids come due, I don't know what the date was, April the twenty-second, maybe, something like that. And, um, we worked the investing public, banks all over Georgia, institution, insurance companies to receive bids. We received bids. We got four bids. Truist Bank bid was the best bid, and, uh, they gave us, um, a five point one three percent interest rate for a twenty-five-year bond, paid from these SPOS and two more votes that you all would have before the voters if we closed by May the thirty-first, and five point one six if we closed after May the thirty-first. And, uh, Ms. Bivens, her staff, and I evaluated that. Uh, we liked that bid. If we went to Wall Street and got a credit rating and did a public offering, the interest rate would be five point two two percent. And so that five point one three is better than if we went through all the cost of actually selling bonds to the public in a public offering. And so, um, we were thinking about bringing it to your work session on, I think it was Monday, but we decided not to and to bring it to this meeting. And, um, we don't mean to surprise you. We don't want to rush you. These are just the fact that you all have already approved it. This is just actually setting the final interest rate on the bonds. The voters approved a rate not to exceed six percent. So this five point one three is lower than what the voters approved. And, um, there's nothing different, or there's nothing that you would find as a surprise in this. But if you all don't want to do it tonight and you want a special call session, I, as your financial advisor, would just encourage you to try to do it so that we could close by May the thirty-first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good deal. If there are questions, Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Walls, and I have several questions. Um, first of all, I heard you say that the public approved the two hundred and eighty million for the SPOS that we're in now.
Yes, ma'am.
And for the public, the SPOS is for capital, um, uh, projects, which is our schools. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're currently in a two hundred and eighty million dollar SPOS?
So it's actually three hundred and something million. The voters in twenty-three approved a bond issue not to exceed four hundred and forty million, and a SPOS that was not to exceed three hundred and something million for five years. We sold two hundred and eighty million out of that four hundred and forty million that they approved. We're not going to issue that hundred and sixty million that you got left unless we need to. We're replacing that with this four hundred and ninety-five million dollar bond issue.
Okay.
Both of them paid by the SPOS.
Okay, so that will be a total of seven hundred and seventy-five million?
Two, two eighty plus four ninety-five, whatever that is.
Right, two, seven seventy-five million over a, we got five years now. How many years have we completed now?
So you're in one five-year. The voters on the March eighteenth approved another five-year. So without going to the voters, you've got SPOS between now and September thirtieth of two thousand thirty-four.
Okay, so that's twenty years?
That's, uh, ten years.
Okay, ten years. Um, 'cause I'm looking at this, and I thought it said twenty-five years in our, um, in our executive's, uh, summary.
It, it does. So the bond issue is twenty-five years.
Okay.
The SPOS is voted in five-year increments. So I'll need two more votes of the SPOS to finish paying off that bond issue, unless you decide to pay it off early.
Okay, so my question is, if, so the bond will be issued for twenty-five years, which means we will pay monthly for twenty-five years?
Uh, well, the bonds are paid every six months.
Every six months.
And you collect the SPOS monthly.
Okay. And so with that being said, if we were to accept this resolution as it is at this particular time and say the current conditions of our economic situation, um, changes drastically, where would that put us in terms of this resolution and this bond, um, for the next ten years? Because currently the SPOS went down a little bit. It wasn't significant, but it went down a little bit. So can you tell us just hypothetically what that would look like?
Yes.
Um, if the conditions were to truly impact our economy?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, there's some key cabinet folks that I've been dealing with during all this process. And it's Ronic Joseph, who does all your capital stuff, Ms. Bivens and her assistant, uh, Jean Harrington, and Dr. Smith and Dr. Hendricks. Uh, the lawyers that help us with it, Doug Selby is standing behind me. He's a bond lawyer. And then Weston Denmark is who y'all know, and his assistant, Daniel Metricardi. We meet and talk about this, meeting after meeting, cash flow after cash flow. It's so important to that group of folks that, um, we have conservative projections. And so your SPOS has been averaging five point eight million dollars a month. Five point eight million times twelve is seventy million a year. This bond issue, together with the two hundred and eighty million you've already sold, the annual payments never exceed greater than sixty, sixty-four million dollars a year. And if SPOS were to decline by, say, ten percent, and you lost six million a year in collections, SPOS would still be able to pay the debt service. And so these bonds are secured by SPOS and by property tax. And the property tax that secures this is over and above your twenty mil cap. So it doesn't count toward that twenty mil cap. But it was the task of that committee of folks that I talk about, that I meet with, if the SPOS were to decline because of the economics, uh, condition of the country, uh, you'd still have enough to pay it out of SPOS. And so, uh, to answer your question, um, this all was sized at a zero percent growth, which means it was seventy million dollars a year, and then only sized at sixty-four million dollars, which was less than that seventy million. So, you know, I'm not a, a, a forecast teller and all, you know. I don't know if it'll get worse than that. But to answer your question, we did take that into account in case it did happen. Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Walls, if I could get you to just point out, I, I, I believe it may be some concerns about the twenty-five-year payback. And one of the reasons why we, uh, the board, the, the community approved the initial SPOS for four hundred and forty, and we asked for a ten-year period during that particular SPOS referendum, which means the payments were pretty steep. That's one of the reasons why this last SPOS, we had it spread out over a longer period of time. Of course, it is our intentions to pay it off much earlier, but we wanted to make certain that we had smaller payments. One of, for one of the reasons you just brought out in terms of, in the event that things get a little bad.
So it's a good thing, if any of y'all So it's a good thing, have any of y'all, as Board Members, ever gotten a call from Dr. Smith, maybe at 7, 8 o'clock at night while he driving someplace? Well, I have a bunch. And one day he called me and he says, you know, if I wanted to pay this off early, it's 25 years, would I have money from SPOS to do that? And so this was six months ago during the campaign, maybe not, maybe five months ago during the campaign. And so if your SPOS were to grow like it's been a growing and it goes above 70 million, you'll have money for pay, pay-go, y'all call it, for pay-as-you-go projects, and you could have some money at your option to pay down debt. So when we took Truist's bid, we worked with them to give you the optional redemption rights in those documents, that resolution. The difference between the annual payments and that 70 million, so in my example, it was 64 million, and so the annual payments, 64 million and the collections are 70 million, out of that 6 million, you can take half or 3 million and pay down the debt so that we could make this 25-year bond a 15-year bond if you wanted to. And so there's in those documents, your ability to do that if you take a notion. And Dr. Smith liked that because y'all might want to make it, pay it off earlier than 25 years.
And lastly, I'm sorry, Ms. Hill. Lastly, I think the Board will be better informed. If you also make them aware, I tell you what, you go ahead and ask your question first.
I was just asking, there's no penalty for paying it off early?
That's a really good point.
Thank you. That's what I was about to ask Mr. Walls to make sure and he put it, explain the provision that he put into the proposal.
So, um, um, there's no penalty for you to pay it off early from that early prepayment that I was just talking about, up to, up to an annual amount, not greater than 10% of the outstanding balance. So we're selling 495 million. You can pay up to $49 million and $500,000 in the first year and not pay any penalty for five years. You know, we ain't going to collect that kind of money, so that ain't, that's not a deal. After five years, you can pay any amount you want at any time with no prepayment penalty. And so it was important to Dr. Smith and Ms. Bivins that we do that. Rates, you know, this 513, it's 2% higher than it would have been two years ago. And so we're hoping that rates fall. Remember, the Federal Reserve is supposed to be lowering rates this year. Whenever they fall, we can refinance this and get you a lower rate.
Are there any other questions? If not, I want to entertain a motion for-
I just have one other question for clarity. You said that we pay these bonds twice a year, every six months. So I'm looking at $1 million?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be $2 million?
No, so that, what you're seeing is the annual principal. What you have before you does not show the interest. And so your bonds are due every February 1 and August 1, and the 280 millions, February and August 1. And so that 1 million is just the principal payment. If you notice, it only goes for 10 years and then it picks up a big lick. That's because you pay that 280 million off. So when that 280 million is gone, which was 10 years, then you have room to pay just this. But here's the greatest thing, the way we did it, when that 280 million's paid off, the annual payments will fall from 60 million to 48 million a year, and it leaves all that extra money for pay-as-you-go.
Okay, but just tell me what would our monthly payment be based on where we are today?
Every six months is about 25, 28 million every six months.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You making the motion?
Ms. Chair, I move that we accept the Superintendent's Recommendation for the Bond Resolution. I'd like to entertain a second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Baker, I seen your hand first. All right, all right. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. Can I get a vote, please? Looks like it's unanimous. Board Members, hold on. Let me check with my Vice Chair. Are we done? Board Members, I appreciate you and thank you so much for making this meeting so pleasurable. Everyone, have a good night. Meeting is adjourned.